I'd like to know what rules are going to be in play for the farmer's market. What have we decided to do? And what have they decided to do?
Yes.
We're in discussion with them, Joe. Nothing has been finalized. Everybody, I think, recognizes the importance of the health and well-being of our citizenry here. And that, you know, this is not going to be like it generally is. It's a social event. We expect social distancing. I think we want to make sure that the vendors that are there, that are going to be, you know, fruits, vegetables, and food can leave off-site. We'd like as many people, especially the vendors, to wear masks, I believe. I think that we ought to have limited access. At any rate, we've got a wide variety of things that I think that should be part of our discussion. And I would invite the rest of you to add a couple of your thoughts on how we best protect the health, well-being of the citizens and the vendors and make this not turn into, right back into a Mardi Gras kind of an event. So, let's all see what we can do here.
Okay. So are we, just a clarification, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate those comments very, very, very much. I would agree with you 100%. Just a clarification, are we passing our own guidelines for the farmer's market? Or are we going to work with them and with the governor's office? What are we, I mean, are we going to pass our own rules for Des Moines?
I believe that we sort of have to. This is in our public rights way and in our streets. And I think not only do we have to be satisfied as a city council about what those rules ought to look like, because we're in charge of protecting the health and well-being. I want to, you know, thank the governor for acknowledging the importance of providing, you know, fresh produce to our citizens and it means, and probably from some of the purveyors that they've shopped with for years. But at the same time, even our police department has a say-so here, because if they don't feel that the health and well-being is being protected, they've got a huge say in whether or not this thing goes on too, because we permit them to operate. And there has been no permit issued yet.
Okay. Yeah, just.
All right. Let's move on quickly to the, we've got a special municipal housing agency governing board meeting. Kay, if it's all right with you, let's call that to order. And I will ask you to take the role of our board members, please.
County.
Here.
Bozen.
Here.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
All right. Second item is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Could we have a motion for that?
I'll move. This is Connie, I'll move.
Thanks, Connie. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any negatives or against the motion? Any abstentions? Hearing none, sounds to me like it passed.
Was that on? Okay, thank you.
Item three is a hearing item. This is a hearing and an adoption of amended municipal housing agency annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2020. Scott, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Is there anything that we should know here regarding this amendment?
So, these are conversations we had actually back a few months. Nothing drastic on the housing budgets. This one in particular is simply amending the current year. And the next item will be for implementing the next fiscal year, starting July 1. I do have Chris Johansson on the line as well, if there are questions about that.
Okay. Let's open it up. Does anybody have any questions regarding our municipal housing agency annual budget? Hearing none, could we get a motion for item three? The 2020 amended municipal housing agency.
I'll move item three.
All right, thank you. It's been moved. Any discussions?
Scott, did you have something?
No, I was just making sure the public had an opportunity. I think the mayor was catching it though.
That who had?
Is there anybody in the public that has any? I see none.
I see none.
All right. The motion is there. Could you poll the council, please?
County.
Yes.
Bozen.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item number four is a hearing and the adoption, as the manager pointed out, of the proposed municipal housing agency annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2021. Let's open it up and see if there's any comments. The manager made a quick one. We have discussed this in the past. And these are, generally speaking, aren't they, Scott, federal funds that we're talking about here?
Yes, so this would be our second aid and our housing that the city owns.
Right.
I do have.
Any questions? Okay?
I do have Chris unmuted, if you have any questions of him.
All right, Chris, thank you for being here. Do you see anybody that's got their hand up that wants to say anything?
If not, I'll move item four, Frank.
All right. Item four has been moved by Councilmember Bozen. Seeing no one else that would like to speak, I would like you to please poll the council, please.
County.
Yes.
Bozen.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Item five is approval of the certification of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development of the amended operating budget for all projects for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, and of the proposed operating budget for all projects for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2021. Chris Johansson, any comments here?
Are you there, Chris? Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
This is an annual item that we are required to submit behind each year, just with the mayor's signature, just showing that the budgets that you just approved are certified.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Anybody have any comment? If not, we probably need a motion on this one. I'll move. Go ahead, Connie.
I'll move approval of item five.
Item five has been moved. Madam Clerk, would you please poll our governing board?
Connie. Whoops, County, I meant to say. That's fine. Bozen.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Seven yes, motion carries.
All right. If someone would give us a motion to adjourn, that would complete the full agenda for the municipal housing agency governing board. Move. It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 In the opposition, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene in about, well, we might as well just move right into it. Okay, it's 4:29. And by the time we do everything, I've just got to quickly adjust my screen here to get back to the right agenda.
Mayor, if I could ask a question?
Yes, please.
I'm assuming that the Zoom meeting invitation is the same for both the housing and the council, but I wanted to make sure with the clerk that it is, so that we don't have to debate.
Yes, they are, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
So, let's go ahead and open up our special city council meeting for April 27. Let's note that it's 4:30. We've got a fairly short agenda, but an important one. Let's call the meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to please take role of the council.
County. Bozen.
Here.
Boss.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
Your Honor, that's a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
I'll move approval.
Item's been moved. Let's hold the council on this one. Madam Clerk.
Bozen.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Item three is to receive and file a communication from the Beaverdale SMID Board regarding the levy for the Beaverdale Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District SMID. Scott, do you want to give us a quick overview of that?
Yeah, sure, Mayor. So we have several of the SMID, all of the SMIDs is part of our budget approvals that are necessary. And so each one of them carries their own finances. Beaverdale is just the first of all the grouping. We're available to answer questions. Again, these were talked about a couple of months ago with each of the SMIDs individually.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Joe?
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why are half of these receive and file and half of them are actual budget resolutions? Is that just a process piece? Like, what's the difference?
Actually, I might defer to legal on. Well, thanks a lot, Scott.
That's a great question, because.
My understanding is that some of the agreements are strictly recommendations. And it depends on how the SMID was set up. And some of the SMID boards, or maybe the downtown board, actually have budgeting authority under the agreement. Larry can give us a really nice detailed response on that, and I'll sure have him send that out to you, Josh. Okay. If I could add to that, Scott, you're exactly right. So the two that are budgeted would be the downtown and Ingersoll that do have some of their own autonomy to make those decisions. So we ask them to submit their budgets to us, whereas the others flow through the city funding. And so we have accounting handling those expenditures. So that is the difference between those groupings.
Yeah. And Southwest 9th is in the grouping that has the budget, too.
Correct. And yes, Ingersoll and downtown, that's three.
Yeah.
I was thinking that originally Sherman Hill did too, because they budgeted for some specific things, including different streetlights and some other things for their neighborhood that I think they've budgeted specifically for, but I'm not positive whether that still holds true.
It does, Mayor. It's just that we actually write the check to make sure those services are provided through the city, whereas these other entities would actually be making the payments themselves.
Okeydoke. Good. All right. I think that.
Westergaard had her hand raised. I'd like to ask something.
Go ahead, Westergaard.
My question is, in the past, when we have approved these SMIDs, we've always been given a booklet that would outline the SMID areas and what the money was being spent on. Are we going to get something like that? I didn't see any, nothing was attached to the agenda. And I'd like to know that, and this is maybe for an offline conversation, but I know in Highland Park, you know, I was told three years ago that it went down in front of Park Fair, and we had some garbage cans there, and nobody was picking them up. And then it was, we would, I was told the SMID was paying for it, and now those have all been, the garbage cans have been removed, because the SMID apparently doesn't go down that far. I'd really like to know what areas the SMID is involved in. I know we have a certain number of businesses, but are we having discussions about expanding those areas or bringing other businesses in? Can anybody answer that?
So, actually, Mayor, I'm going to ask that Nick respond to the pamphlet and the SMID information that we produced in the past about the timing of when that would be available, and then we can move on, Linda.
Okay.
Hi, Linda, this is.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this, we actually handed out those pamphlets when we did the workshop on the SMID. You would have received that, I believe that was, would have been in, I think, December, November or December. I'd have to look back at the specific dates.
Okay. Then I'll go back and pull it off of the workshop.
If you need another copy, just let me know, and I'll make sure you get a copy. Back to you if you no longer have that. And the discussion at that meeting is where we basically had gone through within that pamphlet. It does kind of give those maps and have that discussion of what those are and everything like that. Yep.
Okay, I'll go back. It would be on the workshop. It would be as an attachment, I'm assuming, that we could still pull that off.
I'll look into that. If not, I can make sure Kay has the electronic copy to put out there.
Okay. And I'm just concerned with the Highland Park one.
Sure.
Yes, and I do have those attached to the workshops as well, if you look back.
Okay. I'll get it from there. Sorry, I didn't realize that we had that.
It has been a while, Connie, with all those workshops, starting in November through January. So if for some reason you guys need another copy, just let finance know, and we'll make sure that we provide you with another copy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mayor, if there's not any further discussion, I'd be happy to move item three. And I'm assuming we're going to receive and file communication instead of budget. So I'm going to move item three. All right, it's been, item three's been moved to receive and file. Clerk, I'd like you to poll the council, please.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Bozen.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Takes us down to item four, similar discussion, this one around Highland Park, receive and file a communication from the Highland Park SMID Board regarding the levy for the Highland Park Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District SMID. Let's open it up and see if anybody has anything on this one.
If there are none, I would move to receive and file item four. This is Westergaard.
All right. It's been moved. Kay, I don't see anybody with a hand up.
I don't either, Your Honor.
All right. Item four has been moved. Kay, would you poll the council, please?
County.
Yes.
Bozen.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Item five is to receive and file communication from the Roosevelt Cultural District SMID Board regarding the levy for the Roosevelt Cultural District Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District SMID. Let's go ahead and open it up. Is there anyone to speak to that one?
Seeing none, Mayor, I will move item five.
Item five has been moved. Any hands up? Kay, I don't see any, but.
No, I just went down through. I didn't see any, but I'll check one more time. No, Your Honor, there are none.
All right. Ask you to poll the council, please.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Bozen.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Takes us to item six, which is the budget for the Ingersoll Grand Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District SMID for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2021. Let's open up and see if anybody has anything to say about that SMID, again, Ingersoll Grand.
Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item six.
All right, thank you. Item six has been moved. Clerk, poll the council, please.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Bozen.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven is in the budget for the downtown self-supported municipal improvement district SMID for the year, fiscal year, ending June 30 of 2021. Let's open it up and see if there's anybody that has any comment about the downtown municipal improvement district. Mr. Mayor, if there's no comments, I'll move item seven. All right. Item seven has been moved. Poll the council, please.
Gatto.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Bozen.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight is the budget for the Southwest 9th Corridor Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District SMID for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2021. Let's open it up and see if there's any comments on that, the Southwest 9th Corridor.
I see none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item eight.
All right. Item eight has been moved. See any hands up? Kay?
No, I do not, Your Honor.
All right. Poll the council, please.
Gatto.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Bozen.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Nine is a submittal of the Center Street Park and Ride Facility annual budget to the Des Moines area Regional Transit Authority, DART, and authorization of budget expenditures. We'll open it up and see if there's any comment on that. And Scott, do you have any comment on this?
Mayor, this is simply a requirement that we need to do each year through the FTA approvals that we've had in the past, so that DART is aware of our budget as well.
And the FTA. All right, thank you.
And seeing no one to comment on this, I'll move item nine.
Item nine has been moved. Seeing no hands up either, let's go ahead and poll the council, please.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Bozen.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Item 10 is a transit-related grants from excess Center Street Park and Ride Facility revenues to Des Moines area Regional Transit Authority, DART.
Mayor, if I could, this is Scott.
Yep.
This is just a reminder to council, especially our newer council members, that part of our agreement with the FTA, who helped fund the construction of our Park and Ride Facility, we received several million dollars of federal funding for that project. We agreed that we would only hold $2.5 million in excess funds from this budget item and this accounting area, if you will. So, at the end of fiscal year 2019, we had more than $2.5 million, and so we need to transfer the excess, which is about $250,000, you'll see in this item, to DART for transit-type purposes. We did this two years ago and asked that the funds be spent on shelters, and so we are recommending that we do the same with this $250,000. So that's what this item is. It is something that we need to do each year, for which we're in excess of that $2.5 million.
Scott, question, and thank you for that explanation. I know we did do it a couple of years ago. I think that's a good way of, maybe even if we can't get shelters everywhere, we can at least get benches or garbage cans on some of the top stops that we have in some of the areas that don't have a shelter.
That is allowable expenses and included as part of the authorization here. And there may be other ideas that the council have for spending these funds.
Okay. Does the DART board decide how it's spent, or is that a decision of the council?
So we can tie stipulations to these funds or spend them ourselves on transit. So as long as we get the confirmation from DART that they agree with what we're recommending, I would say we continue to give them the funds. If there's a conflict on how DART is spending those funds, we could take that in-house at the city and spend those instead, as long as they're transit-related.
Well, I mean, I appreciate that, but I know that I've had a big push on the, you know, in Ward 4 specifically, that it needs garbage cans and benches, not just shelters, but an immediate need that we need is garbage cans and benches. And the biggest issue that we have is the maintenance of them. I don't think it's purchasing them, but it's the maintenance of it. So if we can come up with some type of solution that could help some of the constituents, at least in Ward 4, that have really been asking for this, that would be good. I'd like to see some recommendations of that.
Joe, I agree with you, too. I've been beating the drum for a long time up here in Ward 1 for some areas that we need benches. So if nobody jacks, I'd like to move item 10 with the expectation that these funds will go over to DART for the purpose of building shelters, bus benches, garbage cans, and the like, so that our residents have something that they can see that's coming out of a fund we're transferring over to DART.
Bill, if I, this is Westergaard, and I want to echo what you're both saying, but I know four years ago, we had a dis- but I know four years ago, we had a discussion and we were given a map of where bus benches were, and I haven't seen any, any results of that. And I know four years ago, I said, hey, we need, we need benches, we need some shelters. And, and I was told, oh, we're going to get some shelters, but I never hear anything about it. And I drive down the street and I don't see any garbage cans. I don't see anything. So I, I guess I would like for the, for us to have a little more control about where this money's spent and how it's spent.
That's a good point, Lyndon. Scott, when we give this money over to DART, does DART report back to us with what they did with any of that money?
Upon request, yes. But I think you all are aware that they have a comprehensive shelter project. Maybe Councilman Mandelbaum or the mayor can speak to that. But it has not progressed at the speed that I think any of us had hoped when the funding was set to them originally.
I would agree.
Well, and, yeah, and the shelters are not, you know, $240,000 will, will, I believe, get about 10 shelters between construction costs and the materials. And the other issue, which I think we're maybe at the end, the tail end of and can revisit, but the city had a bench contract with, with a vendor that limited what DART could do from a bench perspective. So it might be worthwhile to just have an update on, on these two items. I know DART has their plan, and we can talk about where shelters are available. We've talked a couple of times about the art shelters as a matching program. And I think we, with, with these dollars, we could probably take advantage of that program as well. And so think about how this links with, with our corridors and, and an art piece. But I, I think it maybe makes sense to just have a, and maybe an update from DART in terms of the next shelters that are up in priority, so folks have a sense of where, where, where things are going in the order.
Well, and this, this is Westergaard. I guess I would prefer not to vote to just turn this money over to DART until we have some real conversations about where they're going to be, because these conversations have been going on for several years. And I drive up and down Hubble, and it's pouring down rain, and there's, there are no benches. They're standing in four-foot-tall grass. I, I guess I'm just not real excited about, about turning over the funds and letting somebody else administer them until we have a plan that we know exactly where they're going to be.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please.
This arose out of a dispute with the federal government over the funds. And at one point, they had-
Out of the parking garage, right?
On the, yes, sir. And at one point, they had threatened to take all the money away from the council. And we reached an agreement where we would provide those funds, Scott indicated, for transit-related purposes or use them ourselves for transit-related purposes. And those are, and that agreement is a time-based agreement. We're supposed to provide those funds. And we've done it as part of the budget. To address Councilmember Westergaard's concerns, I would suggest that council approve the item, transfer the funds, but with a more definitive and delineated request from DART as to the accounting for those funds back to council so council can see being spent. But this is not really a matter of council. I mean, it's a problem in terms of that settlement agreement to decide to reprogram those amounts for this year right now as opposed to, and if you want to give staff direction to look at something else for next year, I think that's feasible. But I think it's a problem to decide at this late point in time that we're not going to approve the, the grant.
So this is Westergaard, and I think, I think Bill has a motion on the table. Bill, would you be willing to amend that, to say, okay, we'll give them the funds, but we want to know where the money's going and how it's being split up among the four wards?
I absolutely would be happy to put that in the resolution. I do, I do agree with Jeff and Josh. We've got an opportunity here to get this done. That I know I've got, and I probably you have some spots, too, Lyndon, where we're producing the neighborhood sidewalk program, and they are running right along bus stops. I've got one over here on Urbendale, just to east of Beaver. And we're going to put a sidewalk in. We are going to put a pad in. That's going to benefit DART because we're going to reduce the cost, like Josh has, of $25,000 pretty significantly. And we can put the position of that. It's going to help. So I think we need to get this moved going forward. But again, with the expectation these funds will go to the shelters, benches, and garbage disposal. And to take into consideration Lyndon's concern that we get some sort of reports back with the funds have been spent on.
Well, and a schedule of what they're doing and when they're doing it, so that we get a little better understanding of what's going on. As we move this forward, I, I understand your motion, and I think it sounds like you're good with it patiently, Councilmember Voss, and just recently Bozen, they've had their hands up. Councilmember Voss?
Yeah, thank you. So is it still a good idea to raise our hands or just to jump in?
You, I would prefer that you raise your hands if you can.
Oh, thank you. That's great.
You know I'm not very good at that, Carl.
So from South Side Neighborhood Coalition meeting I attended at, at South Ridge, a few weeks, well, it was only a few weeks ago. It seems like ancient. And Joe, I think maybe you got to that meeting just a tad late. But from Luis at DART, two insights on this conversation. One is that DART, I believe, considers that DART funds shelters, the city funds benches. And so we probably need to clarify that because I think that's part of what we were discussing. Also, I asked what the threshold was for determining if a stop warranted having a shelter. And Luis said 15 inbound rides is, in a day, is their threshold. So it sounds like in some wards, you're talking about locations that might warrant a bench, but at least DART considers that's on the city's dime.
Okay, Councilmember Bozen.
I just want to bring that up only because I, I do know we need more shelters and we need more benches and things to make it easier for the people to ride. But I think in the timing that Jeff brought up, too, is that we don't know what DART's going to need for this upcoming year. I mean, they're impacted just as everybody else will be. So I don't know if I would ever get to be so specific with them right now. I think going forward, I think they need to report back. I think that's great. But I think there's going to be such a need for them just to be able to maintain service. So that would be my one concern to get into directed at this time.
Scott, can those dollars be directed, for instance, and I would ask Councilmember Mandelbaum to operations? Because they're not, they're not taking any funds for rides at the moment. I mean, you can get on there and ride the thing. And so there's no fair.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I can weigh in. And in the initial federal stimulus package, there, there were funds allocated to transit authorities by, by a formula. And so DART, DART is, is or will be a recipient of those funds that will help cover some of their operational losses. So while I think it's well taken, we don't need to be overly prescriptive here. I, I do think we, we can ask as a follow-up to just check in on, on the status of shelter and bench locations. And, and we can just make sure that everyone on council has a little bit more information in that regard so that when we have this conversation again, we all have better information in, in terms of what to expect and what's been done in the not-too-distant past.
Good. Not council member, but I see J.D. Lester has his hand up.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, just a couple of items to clarify. So I want to see if you want to put it in, in the motion. But the roll call clarifies that it can be used, Mayor, to answer your questions. It can be used for operations as well as for capital purposes. But council directs in attachment A to the roll call that it will be used for bus stop improvements, on capital improvements for bus stops, which should include bus shelters, benches, garbage, garbage cans, and accessibility improvements. So if, if you want to direct it to go to operations, you would need to modify the roll call in attachment A.
Okay. Mr. Gatto.
Mr. Mayor, maybe, and I appreciate Josh, maybe you can help. But, you know, as you go out into the suburbs, maybe we can, maybe we can see why we have so much nice benches and garbage cans and things like that along Jordan Creek Parkway and along A Street and some of our other places. They all have nice benches. They all have nice garbage cans and how they're able to maintain those and put those in. Maybe we can work with, work with us and figure out how we can make that happen on, in our city. That'd be great.
Okay. So is there a recommended motion here now, Mr. J.D. Lester?
It's, well, I guess it-
We, we've got Bill's motion out there, but if there needs to be an amendment, if you would direct us in a way that you feel that it is appropriate and legal.
If you, if council's willing to delegate that authority to the manager to make a determination as to whether or not operations might be included depending on COVID funding for DART, I, I think that could, could be reflected in the motion to expand the approved uses of money to include operations depending on COVID funding as determined by the manager with a report back to council.
Bill, does that sound like something that'll work for you?
Well, I, to a degree, I think I can make that work. I'm curious, though. If we're going to help fund the operations from the Des Moines side, what are our suburban neighbors going to do? Is there going to be any money that they're going to get? I, I doubt it.
They pay for their own.
There probably won't be, but I, I guess what I would encourage council to remember is that the source of the funds to build, not the entire garage, but a large portion of the garage, came from the federal government. And this is in excess of programmable funds. They've also allowed the city to keep a $2.5 million reserve for capital work that needs to be done on the garage. So while the suburbs probably are not going to participate and are not going to provide additional funding, this is programmable funding from the FTA that they've required to be used for transit purposes. It's not like this is a choice to use it for something else. It's, it's whether or not the city does the transit purpose expenditure or, or DART does is really the question. But it, it's a very narrow revenue and very narrow expenditure.
I'd be willing to go with it, but I, I agree with what Lyndon says. I'd like to see a report back, and if we see most of that money went to operations, I'm going to be sorely disappointed.
Yeah, this is Westergaard, and, and I guess I, I want the money to go for benches. And if, and if the benches are on the city dime, then we're the ones that should be spending the money on the benches.
Bill, can you put a motion on the table that we can get a vote on?
All right, I'm going to follow Jeff's lead, and I'll have him repeat it. But my, is to move item 10 with the expectation that these funds will be going towards shelters, benches, garbage cans, and the like, that we, we want our citizens to ride safely in the city of Des Moines. And if a report, we want to report back on what the expenditures were spent on. And Jeff, what was your final addition?
It's just whether or not, Bill, whether or not you want to use any portion or allow the manager to determine to use any portion of the $240,000 whatever thousand dollars for operations. That is permissible, but council certainly doesn't have to do that.
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with letting the city manager determine that portion of the resolution. So that's, that clear now, Mayor?
Yep. Josh, you had your hand up. Do you still want to say anything?
No, I was just going to say, I think, I think the issue will sort itself out when, when the manager looks into it and checks in. I, I think the COVID funding and the stimulus will, will allow DART operations to get to a place where they're whole, and we can use these dollars for the bus stop improvements that, that we all want to see.
I agree, Josh.
Good. All right, let's call the question, and I'll ask clerk to pull the council, please.
County.
Yes.
Bozen.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay, good. Let's note that it's 5:06. We're going to have to move straight to the hearings. We'll come back to item 11 shortly thereafter. The first item on the hearings, item 14, is on the consideration of the recommended capital improvement program plan, CIP, for the fiscal years 2021 through, well, 2020 through 2021 through 2025-2026. So council communication number 20-186. Let's open the hearing on that and see if there's anyone who would like to make comment on that out in the general public or the council.
I'll move item 14, Your Honor, unless there's a public from the council or from the public.
Right, the item has been moved. It looks like there's a comment here by Councilmember Voss and then one from the public. Councilmember Voss.
Yes, I've expressed to the, to the council members that I, I have some heartburn with the proposed reconstruction of Second Avenue. And, and I believe under this upcoming fiscal year that the, largely the dollars would be spent to, to begin acquiring property. I've asked that we move this project back one fiscal year. I, and it's a lengthy emails that I've sent. I've gotten some of my questions answered, but not all of my questions. I think there are some safety issues, programming a four-lane undivided road that's in, in conflict with what we have approved and moved DSM. Second Avenue corridor is among the most dangerous four-lane streets in Des Moines, and I don't believe we're doing enough to improve this. I've asked to take a look at this to see if a, a road diet with three lanes would be workable, given some of the projected- uh, given, um, some of the projected numbers. I think when we, we build streets that we should be thinking about, um, the Des Moines residents and who are using the streets. I'm, uh, I'm troubled with spending $12 million on this project that I believe it could be done, uh, with three lanes. And again, asking, um, us to, uh, dial this back and take another look at this project. I think there are economic development and environmental justice issues for, for the neighborhoods. I think, um, this, uh, is, is, is going to hinder, um, safety and neighborhood economic developments. We're taking four properties. Uh, I've asked for a 25-year, um, study on, on, on what that, the loss of property taxes w- w- would be for those, uh, properties. There's also, um, several other properties that would be severely impacted by the loss of proper, um, parking in front of their buildings. Uh, the Faust Auto Body, which is the nearest property to the Des Moines River, um, on the west side of the road, uh, uh, losing five parking places there is, is, uh, essentially going to put them out of, uh, business. So let's take another look at this project and spend some more time to see if, um, a three lane road would work on, uh, Second Avenue.
Bill, if you'll allow me to say something, I'm sure you might want to, but, I, I appreciate, I appreciate, uh, Carl, your, your concern. I've had similar concerns for, uh, probably 15 or 20 years. However, there's a group of folks between university and the river that are on the east side of the road that have substantial movement of very large trucks, uh, with merchandise, uh, ingress and egress in and out of there, who through the years have been very concerned, especially in that specific section, with, uh, having less lineage and, uh, the congestion and, uh, obstacles to delivery that, uh, might occur. And Bill has been attending those meetings much more regularly in the recent past, uh, than I. But, um, I've gotta tell you, um, we've had long discussions with, uh, a very large contingent of business owners to the east of the road. I also am concerned about the people on the west as, as are you, uh, it sounds like Carl. But, uh, um, we need to analyze what the, the needs are for the full section. And, uh, I think that's what we've been struggling through for the last, uh, decade plus. Bill, do you want to say something real quick?
Well, if you want me to say real quick, or I can tell you what I really think. But here's what I'm gonna tell councilor Boss. Uh, this has been a project of mine we've been working on for well into three years. We have already pushed it back one year. Uh, I have sat through all of these meetings. Uh, we've met with all the, uh, business owners on Second Avenue and Central Place, and they are all in agreement. We have come to many discussions on where we want to go, what, uh, compromises we needed to do. And we, uh, have a pretty good idea how this thing is gonna work. We were gonna go with a five lane approach. A three lane approach is laughable. Uh, it will never, it will never do anything. And, and Carl, I don't know why you put something in your email that congestion is good. Uh, I, I'm challenged to think, would you want to go tell the parents of, uh, a child that was injured and trying to get to Mercy or Methodist Hospital that they died because there was congestion on Second Avenue? That to me doesn't make any sense. Uh, we need to get this thing going. There is a, a lifeblood of a lot of businesses in the area. Like I said, if you really wanted to do something on this, uh, Carl, where were you on the, uh, traffic safety committee? Where were you when we were discussing the north, south, uh, roads coming through Des Moines? We had, uh, you were right there and you didn't say anything. So to come in on the 11th hour doesn't make any sense at all. Like I said, we've, we've even walked it. We've had engineering, the city managers walked it with us. We've gone through, we pointed everything out. We have done everything, uh, feasible to make this thing work. Engineering has given you the responses. I wholeheartedly agree with everything that engineering does. Now I'm gonna tell the communications engineer, now civil engineer, but I agree that they've done their homework. We pushed it back a year. Uh, we've got the money and the budget to do it. And this is the thing that we need to have going forward. Uh, these businesses bring in a lot of people to work. And the final thing is, we don't know what the final look on the project's gonna be. Uh, I don't know where you think that Tom Martin's gonna lose four parking spots when we haven't even got a final design. That's what we're gonna be approving next month and, uh, to send it to, uh, an engineering firm for design. So, uh, coming at the 11th hour is absolutely wrong. It's the wrong way to look at this. This is a much, much needed, uh, re process of working with sewer systems. So we're gonna get our sewers repaired. We're gonna get, uh, our streets repaired. We're gonna make that a better, uh, highway to get our people in and out. And this is what the neighbors want. This is what the businesses in Central Place want. And this is what the people on the Second Avenue Business District want. So, uh, I, I'm going with Joe's, uh, motion to move 14.
We've got another hand up. I'll, uh, let, uh, Scott Sanders, uh, it looks like, okay, I could be wrong, but it looks like the, uh, uh, citizen that had his hand up, uh, has taken it down.
He has.
Okay, Scott, uh, why don't you, uh, jump in and then let's go to Josh and then back to Carl. And now I see Larry James put his hand back up.
Okay.
Yes, uh, mayor, just as a suggestion, uh, so we were not prepared to have a, a full rehash on, on the Second Avenue, uh, merits, if you will. And there's, I would tell you, I have real concern about delaying it another year, given the bridge improvements and the sewer improvements that need to move forward. Um, and so we, we need to know how the road construction will occur, uh, along in tandem with those other two projects.
Great, Scott. We've waited long enough.
And, and so, um, I, I,
Too many other projects are waiting in the wings to get this done.
Yeah, so I, mayor, we've really got two choices to move ahead, uh, with, with, uh, at least four of the council members agreeing that needs to move ahead as scheduled. Or, uh, we schedule another time to talk specifically about the Second Avenue. I think those are our two options for, for tonight.
All right. I move 14. 14 has been moved. I see a hand up, uh, Larry James, and then we'll go to Josh and then back to Carl. Larry?
I gotta go, I gotta go on unmute him just one moment. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, uh, Larry James, 114 30th, Des Moines. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll keep it brief. I share councilman Boss's concerns. Uh, I understand the arguments for the Second Avenue reconstruction. Obviously, the road needs to be re- reconstructed. It's in terrible shape. No one's, no one's disputing that. I think the council really is just making a policy decision, as you do. And you're the policy member, uh, making body of the city, uh, duly elected. Uh, really, you're making a decision whether or not this is an area that should be primarily benefiting suburban commuters who move through our city or generating wealth for the city. And I think that by not considering during the process, uh, a three lane configuration, uh, council is, is, uh, uh, losing an opportunity to, to continue to allow traffic to move through safely. In fact, safer than, than the proposed design, uh, by lowering, uh, and, uh, generating wealth along the corridor. We have a, uh, a road that has currently fewer cars per day than Douglas Avenue. Council has already approved or is, is going to approve tonight, a proposal to, uh, start a pilot project on Douglas Avenue, which should go from four to three lanes. Douglas Avenue in 2040 is proposed to have approximately 20,000 cars a day. This project is proposed to have approximately 20,000 cars a day. Uh, the, um, the, the speeds that will be, uh, projected on this road just by design, it's not, regardless of what you post the speed at, a four lane road, you're gonna go faster than you do on a three lane road. Uh, and, um, as a, as a, a real estate, uh, attorney, my, um, really, really focusing on the development and, and as a taxpayer of Des Moines, I'm, I'm really concerned about the removal of additional properties from, from the tax rolls, especially concerning the fact that, uh, if you look at the map of, of the four, uh, properties that we taking completely, uh, three of them, uh, appear to be minority owned businesses. And, uh, you know, we have an area here that is actually a fairly thriving, uh, Chinese and Vietnamese, uh, district in our city. We're taking out, uh, a couple of businesses there completely, uh, and actually reducing the parking of the Double Dragon, uh, grocery store. So I think that the social equity cost is high on here. Uh, I think that the, uh, uh, the, the reluctance for some, I, I don't understand the reluctance, but there's reluctance to consider a three lane configuration. Uh, and I think that, um, um, by, by pursuing this and proceeding tonight, which it sounds like you will, uh, I just want to be on record to say that as a taxpayer, that I feel like this is, um, not going to benefit, uh, the city as a whole. I think that the return on investment on this project, which is estimated, uh, in total, uh, to be over $17 million. Uh, I'd be hard pressed to see how the ROI for the city is going to be benefited, uh, in a positive manner, uh, over and above that, that, that amount. So, um, just my two cents, um, and I know that it's, it sounds like it's a foregone conclusion, uh, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, Josh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so I, I share the concerns that, uh, council member Boss has raised. I, I have, uh, raised a number of these concerns throughout the process on, uh, on this corridor. And, uh, so I think the points about safety in particular are well taken. Uh, the, the points about, uh, the land that we are going to have to take out of, uh, out of, uh, higher and better use to expand, uh, or to do this reconstruction. I have concerns with that as well. And then, uh, on top of that, we are at a place where, uh, I believe we're gonna be revisiting a number of CIP decisions over the course of the summer, uh, because our budget situation is, uh, is changing, uh, due to the pandemic and everything that is going on. So I, I would be willing to look at, uh, this particular issue. I, I plan on voting for the budget, but I would be willing to look at this particular issue, uh, as one of the items that, that we come back to. Uh, is something that we, we should address as we are looking at those types of decisions over the coming months.
Okay, good point. Carl, uh, back to you and then to Connie.
Sure. Thank you, uh, Mayor Connie. So, um, uh, I can appreciate that the Second Avenue, um, uh, business owners in the, um, business part, the Central Place have concerns about this. Man, if any of you had been at the meetings when the proposal for, um, the traffic calming on Ingersoll Avenue was, uh, uh, going about, they were absolutely dug in their heels, business owners who did not want to change. Now look at that corridor now. Um, that's, that's a fabulous, um, corridor that we should ho- hold up as an example to all. I, I think, um, uh, Bill's comments about the, um, regarding traffic, um, so do we design our streets for two hours of traffic a day? So the morning rush hour and the afternoon rush hour. I, I, I just, um, uh, that really, um, gives me a lot of heartburn. And there's, there's also other ways to get into the Central Place area. You can get up, uh, in there on University Avenue. So, um, uh, uh, I don't know what, and maybe Scott, is there an opportunity that we could approve the CIP a- as it shows tonight, but can we revisit this? I, I did not do this at 11th hour. I asked questions all along while we were, uh, going through the CIP. It's just taken a long time for some of my questions to be answered. So, um, I think it's worth taking another look at this project. If there was a way that, um, um, Scott, maybe you could suggest, um, an avenue to do that.
Mayor, that, that, that is, that is an option. It's just, when I think the reference to the 11th hour, um, councilman Boss is that even prior to your seat, you, you coming onto the council, there was, you know, a couple of years worth of work and, and finally got to a consensus at that point in time. Um, having said that, there are still approvals necessary on this project and will be, uh, several more. So, uh, you know, I, as a city manager, need to be assured that there are four, more than four council members that agree with this project moving forward, uh, as a four lane facility. And if that's not the case, then we absolutely need to come back as a group, uh, and, and figure out a new solution. But, um, I, I, we do need to know if there's, if there's council support.
So, uh, to hurry with this process, uh, on a, on a road that's gonna have a 25 ye- year life, I just, I'm having problems accepting that.
Carl, I really appreciate your, your thoughts. Uh, we have put these up and even prior to, uh, council member, uh, Gray getting on the council, we worked on this corridor with council member Velocis. And, uh, it, it's really been a, um, sort of a touch and go, ongoing conversation for, I would say, heading towards 15 years, uh, rather than just the, the three. It's, uh, it's a tough one. Uh, there's a lots of, uh, pros and cons. I've been on the, uh, the Ingersoll corridor that was pointed out and, uh, argued on the, uh, the side to, uh, to do that. I also can tell you the other problem that I see even more problematic on, uh, Second Avenue because of, of the massive amounts of trucks going in and out is some of the, uh, Ingersoll solution is to park the semis right in the middle of the street in the, uh, three, uh, lane, especially in this case offloading to that grocery and then also to the liquor store and some of those others that would require that where they can't exactly get into the, to the, to the property easily. So they just park the doggone thing in the middle of the street rather than going around through the parking lots and all that sort of thing. So I think, uh, if we're gonna revisit this, there's many, many issues, uh, that, that need to be, uh, looked at and, uh, has been a subject of, of discussion, I think, since, uh, uh, Scott's been with the city and I think I know for sure since, uh, uh, Jeff has been with the city. Um, this is, this is a tough area between university and, um, uh, the river that, that has, um, uh, been tested over time. And of course, this four lane road that is in there has been in there for, I don't know, 50 years.
Give me an idea. I used to deliver papers down there.
That was just 10 years ago though, Bill. I understand. Okay, uh, let's move on to council member Bosin. Uh, let's get all the council's comments in and then, uh, let's figure out what the, uh, the motion, uh, looks like. I, I think council member Gatto's still got his hand up and I think, uh, has an idea. But at your rate, councilor Bosin.
I was just gonna get clarification. This is really about the total CIP program. And to Josh's point, everything's gonna be up for grabs prior to review. And I would be supportive if we want to look at it again. And we do have other opportunities, as Mr. Sanders said. And we do have other opportunities as Mr. Sanders said, uh, so I'm supporting it. But I just want to make clarification. It's the overall. And I, I guess I'm not willing to pull out one item right now for the overview. I think we do need to review every project we probably have going forward almost to see how we can scale back or do what we need to do to get the funds that we need to do the other items. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, Joe?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and I appreciate all the comments. You know, I know Carl has got on the council just this year. I mean, we've sat through over the last six years, many, many workshops. I mean, workshops in the morning, all day workshops where the engineering department came through and offered us a four lane or a five lane. We've taken hours upon hours of, of discussing Second Avenue. We all were in agreement of this was the best fit for, for that. And, and there were six out of the seven of us that were in those discussions at the time. Um, this is, as Connie pointed out, the, the complete CIP plan. Uh, and, and just one, one comment that was said and Carl, and I appreciate this, and I know Ingersoll has been a huge success, but Ingersoll is, is not a model that you can take to everywhere in the city. And I know that, that folks and staff would love to do that. But people, a lot of people in different parts of the areas and ta- of our town don't want that. And I can tell you, we tried, Christine Hensley and I tried to, to do that on Southwest 9th and make it a three lane road with parking. And, um, you would have thought that we were the devil and, and we needed to leave the meeting, uh, immediately. We were going to be hung at the time of bringing it up. So Central Place is, is similar to that. It's an industrial commercial area. There is lots of large trucks. And I think that we took that into consideration when we looked at the maps that the engineering department put in. You know, I understand your concern, but we cannot think that we can model every single street like Ingersoll because it's not going to be successful all over the city. And as soon as we all can, to come to terms with that, I think we would have a lot less disagreement. So those are my comments. I still have the motion to move in item 14, and I guess we can vote. And maybe we'll be on the, maybe it'll work out through the vote and we can move on.
Okay, thank you. Question has been called. Uh, I see no other, uh, hands up. Madam Clerk, I'd ask you to, to pull the council on this item, please.
Okay, Gatto?
Yes.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard? Just a second, I have to unmute her. She had a bunch of noise in the background. Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, uh, good discussion. A lot of good points came up. Uh, let's continue to try to do what's best for our citizens and businesses moving forward. And with that, let's move on to item 15, which is on the amendment of the annual budget for the current fiscal year ending June 30 of 2020, Council Communication Number 20 dash 186. Any quick comment, uh, Scott?
Uh, so the amendment, there is an attached, uh, Council Communication and a two-page memo that was provided to council, just, just some minor changes, uh, including the receipt of the, uh, CDBG funds and ESG funds, which are on this agenda to discuss. Otherwise, the change is the 10 cents. Well, actually, this is for the, uh, amendments, which are even more minor for the current year.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? This hearing is open. Is there anyone from the public who has any comments to make?
If not, I'll move 15.
All right, item 15 has been moved. I will ask the clerk again to pull the council, please.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard? Let me make sure she's not muted.
I don't.
I've got her. Westergaard, do you have, Westergaard?
Yes, yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
County?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay, item 16 on the proposed budget for fiscal year ending June 30 of 2021, Council Communication for 20 dash 186. Scott, did you want to make a quick comment on this one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The, the comment I was going to make earlier is reflected in the fiscal year 21 budget, which the major change is the tax rate, uh, was originally recommended to be reduced by the 10 cents. And with this revised, uh, recommendation, uh, the recommendation is to leave the tax rate the same, not lower it. Uh, there's again, Attachment A that was provided that shows some of the accounting changes, uh, that, that needed to take place as well, are available to take any questions.
Scott, I'll just make one, uh, quick comment. I want to thank you and all of our, uh, budget staff. Uh, these are going to be really trying times. And, uh, I think that you've made some, uh, appropriate recommendations to us. We have, uh, fought really hard to, uh, to work for our taxpayers and see what we can do to, um, to reduce their property taxes. Uh, but at the moment, uh, given the fiscal impact of, of our revenue side and what's happening, uh, I really appreciate the adjustments that you've made and the recommendations to us. And with that, I'm going to open it up, uh, Councilmember, uh, Gatto.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And, uh, first off, Scott, thank you for you and your team. I know all the, the staff is on, on the line, so they deserve a big thank you. They've, uh, this budget has probably been one of the most challenging ones. Um, I know that last year when we thought we were going to get a, a huge chunk of sales tax money and we were going to be using that, we had a lot of projects, CIP projects, we were looking at a 40 cent decrease. And, and today, uh, we're lucky that we're not increasing taxes. And I think everyone needs to be aware of that as we start going around to neighborhood groups again eventually. Um, you know, i- it's important that they know that they didn't get the wool pulled over their eyes. We went through a pandemic and we went through a, some major, major things that no one seen coming. And, uh, I think it's important to know that at least we were able to keep the tax rate stable. I'm hoping next year we'll be able to do that. But the important thing is, is we need to fix our streets, our sewers, and do the things that we said we were going to do when we passed the law of watch and sales tax. And w- we're committed to do that through this budget and through next year's budget. And, and, and I know all seven of us, and I won't speak for everybody, but I know that working with everyone that they're committed for that too. So, uh, you know what, I'm, I'm going to support this budget, uh, for those reasons. But, uh, you know, Scott, you said 10 cents, it, it was supposed to be 40 cents. So just a, a clarification, let's not forget what we talked about last year. But I, I think it's appropriate what we're doing tonight as, uh, and our residents will understand why we're doing it tonight.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else on the council want to make comment? And I'll ask also if there's anyone in the public that would like to make comment. Josh?
Yeah, well, I, I want to, uh, echo what, what Joe was saying in terms of thanking the staff. You know, the conversation tonight is maybe a, a shorter part of what's to come in, in the, uh, next few months. And I know there's a ton of work that staff has put in thinking about the budget implications of everything that we're facing right now. And I think we're going to have to have some really tough conversations in the coming months, uh, so that we can stay on track on some of the things that we prioritize from our, our infrastructure investments and our investments in streets, including our complete streets, uh, and, and priorities on, on sidewalks, the things that we promised neighbors that we would, that we would do, uh, and figuring out how we can do as much of what we promised in what's going to look like a very, very different situation than we were facing just a couple of months ago. So to me, that's the, the piece to underscore is that we've got a lot of conversation yet to have on the future of, of, of our budget and, and how we make things work. There was a tremendous amount of work that was done, uh, to get to this point. Uh, and, and I thank all of the staff that was a part of that. But we've got a tremendous amount of work left to do. Uh, and that's going to be really important conversations that we're, we're going to have. And, uh, I look forward to engaging, but we need to, to be open to, uh, looking at a lot of different solutions.
Thanks, Josh. Mayor, I'll move item 16. All right, 16 has been moved. Uh, let's check and see, uh, get public. I see none. You see any, Kay?
No, I do not.
All right, let's go ahead and pull the council, please.
Gatto?
Yes.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you all. And I want to thank our council for working so hard together also in, in, uh, helping and supporting the actions, uh, that, uh, have moved forward and been recommended by our city council, um, uh, to our staff and the staff's hard work, um, has been pointed out. You guys have really had to make some adjustments in a very short period of time, given the circumstances that have been thrown at us, uh, with this pandemic that we continue to face that, uh, seems to be, uh, headed towards a peak, uh, with an unbelievable increase in, um, uh, cases across the state. So let's all, uh, be careful and, and thank you all for everything that you've done in this. That's the last item on the hearings, but we'll close the hearings. And Kay, I've got, uh, 541. That takes us back to item 11. Item 11 was, uh, a, uh, fund transfer resolution of the City of Des Moines, uh, fiscal year 2020. Scott, any comment there quickly?
So, uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. The council may recall that this is an additional item that's now required with each annual budget approval, that we pull out a separate attachment, uh, to identify where transfers are necessary between funds internally. So it's somewhat of an administrative, uh, task that just simply needs to be done. But I do have Nick, uh, available for any questions that, that the council has on. You'll see, uh, we need to do it all from an amended standpoint for the current year. And the next item addresses the transfers anticipated in the budget for next year.
Anybody have any quick, uh, questions on this? This will be, uh, obviously Scott, we're going to continue working on it. And as everybody has pointed out, um, we're going to have to modify and adjust, uh, as circumstances present themselves. So thank you all for stepping up and knowing that this is, uh, this is a piece that's going to be testing all of us, uh, probably for the coming 12 months. Anybody? If not, let's see if there's anybody in the public.
There is not, Your Honor.
I'll move item 11. Is that where we're on?
11.
Yeah, I'll move 11.
11 has been moved. Uh, Kay, will you pull the council, please?
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
County?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Takes item 12, uh, as Scott referred to it a second ago. This is the fund transfer resolution of the City of Des Moines for fiscal year 2021. Any other, uh, additions to your comments, Scott? If not, um, we'll open it up and see if anybody else has any comments.
Nothing from me, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Mayor County, if, if, if no one else has any comments, I'd like to, to move item 12, please.
All right, thank you, Carl. Um, item 12 has been moved. Let's quickly check. I see no hands up, um, from our 46 participants. And, uh, so if you would, pull the council, please.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item 13 is an item that, um, has been put on for discussion. It's, uh, a, uh, quick, uh, understanding of the use of the CDBG and ESG COVID-19 funding. And Scott, uh, I'm going to ask you to quickly summarize, uh, what this is and then we'll open it up and see if there's, uh, anyone in the public that'd like to make comment on this as well. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so there is a document that has been sent out, uh, that, uh, shows you from a high level the CDBG funds that the city has received and ESG funds, um, which are emergency funds to prevent homelessness. And so we received about 2.2 million of the CDBG version and about 1.1 million of the ESG funding. These are related to COVID-19, uh, impacts. And so, uh, they need to be spent as such. Um, however, we've not gotten, uh, any specific additional guidance from HUD who regulates these funds as to, uh, more specifics. Now, they, there is a long history, however, of addition, other CDBG funds, uh, that have been distributed over the years. And we anticipate that there will be some restrictions that require these funds to, uh, have benefit for low income individuals in our community or low income neighborhoods geographically. And so, uh, we, we do need to proceed with some caution, uh, as to how we allocate the CDBG funds. Um, and then on the ESG funds, uh, again, the homeless aspect needs to be addressed in how those funds are spent. Thank you, Kay, for bringing this, this document up. Uh, these are, uh, recommendations that I put together with staff. Chris Johansson and Aaron Olson Douglas, uh, have assisted in this regard. I will state that as we run through this, um, at this point in time, we have a hearing set for May 4th, uh, that adjusts our plan, action plan. You'll see reference there. We have the ability to tweak these numbers, uh, if the council wants to go in a, in a different direction. But you will see there is also, uh, an administrative allowance. I would, I would say at this point in time, we've put those allowances at what, what the federal government guidance allows for, which is 20% of the CDBG and 10% of the ESG. Those funds can be spent, uh, with staff time and other expenditures on any aspect of responding to COVID-19, not just these programs that we are considering. And as you might imagine, there is significant time being spent throughout our organization in the general fund, uh, to, uh, respond to COVID-19. And so at this point in time, we have no assurances, um, that there will actually be, uh, federal funding coming to the city. We, we've, we've got, uh, the intent, um, from a couple of our federal legislators, uh, that, that that is the direction being headed. But at this point in time, um, I would urge that we leave the administrative portion at what is allowed, uh, by HUD. And we can always come back and readdress that and reallocate those administrative funds if we find that we've, uh, been recouped through a new source or a new, uh, federal bill forthcoming. So, um, I, I have Chris and Aaron also available here to answer questions. But if, Mayor, if we could start with the CDBG. But if, Mayor, if we could start with the CDBG, the 2.2 million, I've spoken individually to council members about the desire to spend 1 million of those funds on a small business relief effort and combine that with $500,000 of city funds that have been allocated for economic development purposes that allow for no restrictions on the 500,000 portion in combination with the $1 million of CDBG funds that will have either geographic requirements or applicants would have specific requirements as to benefiting low-income wage earners.
Okay. Councilmember Gatto's got his hand up?
Sure. Scott, just a question. I know when we talked originally, I know you were going to talk to the county about contributing, and we were partnering also with them. Did that not happen?
Yes. And so the recommendation for this $1 million of CDBG fund would be in combination with the Des Moines Partnership and the county and potentially other cities addressing their own municipalities. But our funds and whatever matching funds we get from the private side and the county would be spent on Des Moines businesses only. I understand the county is that they're looking at what would roughly end up being, I believe, $100,000 of potential contribution towards the city of Des Moines program. And the private fundraising has targeted roughly 200, a little over 200,000. And we do have some individuals on the call that can help answer some additional questions from the partnership aspect of this. They are continuing to privately fundraise to add to that number. But at this point in time, there was some confidence, I'm hearing, from about 200, a little over 200,000 on the private side and around 100,000 from county sources to add to ours.
And will the, we talked about the forgivable loan being, is that a third-party review of that? Or how does that work?
Yes. So the partnership has been fabulous in putting us in contact with some resources, third party, that can administrate the application process electronically, actually do reviews on the fiscal viability of those companies and applicants, and then score them based on how harmful the COVID-19 impacts have been and any corresponding closures through proclamations for which these small businesses have lost revenue. As you might imagine, some applicants have completely had to shut down, others may only be partially shut down. And so that review will be done by the third party in asking for fiscal information from the applicants. And then that fiscal scoring would be provided to us along with the applications, the requests for funding, such that the city gets to determine the actual awards at the end of this process. So they are only starting us out, and we would get the final answer on which batch of applicants would actually receive.
Would that be, would that, is that a council vote that will be okaying all the applicants? Or would that be a staff, through staff?
So that's partly a legal question. There will have to be some, obviously, some council approvals yet in the grant agreements. I would hope and envision that that process would allow for one batch of awards to occur at once through the council. I'll let Jeff maybe chime in if he wants to on how he kind of envisions this, but we still have a lot of details yet to be worked out. But there will have to be some council approvals yet.
Jeff, any quick comment?
Well, excuse me, I think the issue from the legal perspective is that we don't have enough guidance yet from the feds. We've made repeated requests, and we've got some guidance, but I don't think we have necessarily all the guidance that we need. So I think Scott's right. I think there would be a series, or at least an initial approval by council that would be required on the, just of the program and expenditures going forward. And then, depending on the guidance that is ultimately received, we can determine whether or not there needs to be additional council action or additional delegation to staff or the best way to approach that.
Okay. And then just.
We've got a couple of council members with their hands up, so if you've got one last one, Joe. Go ahead.
Yeah, the emergency food distribution, how did we come up with just $100,000 for that particular program? Is that designated in the, in what the feds say we can spend it on?
No.
Or is that just what we said?
That was a starting point that I put in there. This is Scott. That number can absolutely change. And there may be others that have better guidance on what that need is. All these programs, as you might imagine, council, have greater needs than each of these numbers, especially on the CDBG side with small business loans, rental assistance, which again, I can have Chris kind of address. These are families that are potentially looking at evictions and need some assistance through payment of rent or mortgage. And then also the opportunity for emergency food distribution, which is an idea of paying to have local restaurants provide hot meals, evening meals for those families in need. All three of these have great amount of needs far beyond the numbers you see in front of you. So there's an opportunity to shift those numbers as needed. Thank you, Scott.
November, Westergaard.
I was going to ask a question similar to Joe's about how this money was divided up. I agree, there's just not going to be enough money to help everybody that needs help in our community. I'm just wondering, with the rental and mortgage assistance at 684, the small business at a million, could we maybe adjust that number a little bit? I absolutely support the emergency food distribution, but it looks like we're taking it all out of the rental mortgage assistance, and it looks like it's really more of a small business item. So I'm just wondering if we can adjust those funds a bit, if possible.
Yes, there is an ability to do that. I would just indicate that conversations of the starting point was $1 million to the coalition of the partnership and the county. So although we can back down from that, yeah.
I just, look at it.
All right, thanks, Linda. Carl?
Yes. So the SBA defines a small business as 500 or fewer employees. And so is there any definition how through these dollars we're going to define what a small business is?
Mayor, if I could, I'd actually refer to Aaron and maybe May, who have.
All right, let's unmute Maren. Aaron?
Aaron, you have the floor.
Counsel, Mayor, council, this is Aaron Olson Douglas, Director, Economic Development. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, great. Could you repeat the question, Councilmember Boss?
Sure. I believe the SBA defines a small business as 500 or fewer employees.
Correct.
I'm just curious for the definition of this Small Business Relief Fund, how are we going to define a small business?
We are going to narrow it significantly. We are looking at 25 to 30 employees as the definition for this program.
Okay.
Is it 25 to 30, or are you going to allow lesser, like down to five or four or one?
We are going to go one to either 25 or 30.
Good, thank you. Go ahead, Carl.
Oh, yeah. And I would be in favor of bumping up the emergency food distribution, in part because that puts restaurant employees to work to help distribute the food. So I think there's a double benefit there. Thank you.
People are hungry. I seen it firsthand today. We need to put more in there.
Yeah, after seeing your lineup, Joe. Sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
We have iPad, Michelle.
Let me get her unmuted.
Okay.
Michelle?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you to city council members, to the mayor, and to the city manager for your work in this very important area. We appreciate greatly being that the emergency food distribution is being considered as part of this block grant, and know that you have difficult, difficult decisions to make. I will say that the need is great in the Des Moines community. We have typically, in months past, for many years, provided over $500,000 of food support into the Des Moines Public School District every year with the schools, with the doors closed and most of those food pantries not operating. Families are having a very difficult time filling their food budget need. This is intended to be an evening meal, a hot meal, provided to families in low-income areas. There would be some reimbursement of the child's meal through the USDA, a summer food service program. We think we can leverage USDA food that the Food Bank of Iowa manages, and that restaurant partners could also leverage vendor relationships to have product donated, knowing that at this time institutional restaurant-grade food is a glut in the marketplace. So I appreciate your consideration. I have submitted some additional information via Josh Mandelbaum for consideration and would be happy to have further conversations on this topic. And again, appreciate your thoughts and your considerations as it concerns feeding hungry folks in Des Moines, Iowa.
Michelle, thank you for your comment. Let me ask you, just for the record, could you give us your name, address, and what organization you're representing?
Michelle Book. I'm the CEO of Food Bank of Iowa, and I'm at 2220 East 17th Street in Des Moines, Iowa.
All right. Thank you, Michelle.
Mayor, this is Scott.
Yep.
If I could, I think we also have Cameron maybe available to, there's an aspect to the small business I'd like to also address with the council, is an opportunity to partner with a different group that has a focus on some minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses, that I think would be incredibly beneficial to work with them as well through this process. Again, a lot of details would still need to be worked out on how we could best work together and leverage each other's resources. But I think it'd be great if we heard from them as well.
Yep. And I have also, so thanks for bringing that up. I've talked to Cameron and Deidre DeGier, and so if one of them would want to put their hand up and maybe make a couple of comments, that'd be a great time.
I just unmuted Deidre.
Awesome. Thank you for the opportunity to shed a little bit light on the project Cameron and I are working on. He has a competing meeting right now with the NAACP, so he may have had to drop off already.
He's got his hand up, so he'll.
Oh, great. Great, great, great. Great. So essentially, I'll just give you a brief 30-second background. Early on in March, several organizations joined ranks to align, to really uplift the low-income and minority community as it related to small business ownership, who were finding out very early that it was difficult for them to prepare to apply for some of these early deadline opportunities. And it was also difficult for them to connect with the opportunities as well. And so as a result, these organizations decided to create a supplemental fund with $50,000 in seed money, and it's grown since then. And the goal is to connect our small businesses in our community, our communities of color who often do not apply or connect with resources like this, encourage them to participate, while also ensuring that they're connecting with the dollars that are going to help them through this process, which also means education. And so I'll piggy or push it off to Cameron just to talk about the educational component, because as we're working with our small business owners in this process, helping them to prepare for different types of applications, whether it be ours or others, there's a great need for technical assistance. And our partners are amongst those partners, Iowa State Extension, our education partner at this time. And I'd like to really have Cameron chat with that educational component a little bit.
All right, thanks, Deidre. Cameron, you on?
Cameron?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Deidre. Thank you, council, for allowing us the opportunity to speak on this. As Deidre mentioned, Iowa State University Extension has hopped on as our educational partner. I think it's important for us to understand that a lot of these businesses need the immediate relief in dollars right now, but for them to see their way out of this pandemic stronger than before, the educational pieces are going to be even more key to their progress. Our business development team at Iowa State Extension Outreach, which is my employer, is combined with Farm Food and Enterprise Development, Community Economic Development Department, as well as a Small Business Development Center. We're focused on four different responses right now. One we'll be doing, we have available podcasts on best practices that are available currently. We have 10 that will be going up over the weekend. We'll also be doing webinars, classes, and as well as technical support. In the form of our classes, we're going to be introducing businesses to the Business Model Canvas, which is a tool we use to help businesses understand how they can change their business model and reevaluate that process, especially in this time. We know that when the state does open up, we're not going to go back to business as usual. It's really going to be an opportunity for these businesses to understand how they can alter their business plans in order to be as successful as they can. In addition to that, we have classes on the business plan, financial resources, restaurant financial analysis, and also business startup. It's also important that we focus on technical assistance, so we have about 10 different employees that will be doing one-on-one business coaching with small business owners. This will come in the form of financial benchmarking, financial snapshots, market analysis, and feasibility studies, as well as business plan assistance. Our expertise falls in line with Strategizer, which is our business canvas, business model canvas working tool, as well as Live Plan, which helps us with our feasibility studies, and in Vertical IQ, Biz Minor Industries CFO, which are all of our market analysis tools. The great thing about a market analysis, we can get it all the way down to county level. And in some cases, depending on the industry, we can get it down to city level. But the goal with this plan is really to ensure that these businesses have the resources available, not only financial, but also the technical resources, to ensure that they come out of this strong.
Right. And the group of organizations is amazing. I'm really proud of just the diversity that exists and the amount of effort that these organizations all, of course, have in competing priorities in the midst of COVID, but they're deciding to commit to small businesses. And so that includes the Directors Council, the Immigrant Entrepreneur Summit, League of United Latin American Citizens, which is also known as LULAC, Iowa State Extension, of course, Dream Iowa. Iowa Community Capital is our fiscal agent for this program, and they are processing all of our granted dollars out at no cost to us, which is awesome. The Bosniak American Association of Iowa, IMBARC, who focuses on refugees specifically from the Burmese population, but not exclusively. The Des Moines branch of the NAACP, Latino Resources of Iowa, they put on the Latino Heritage Festival each year. A Des Moines Area Community College through the Financial Empowerment Center and Evelyn K. Davis. And then One Voice DSM, which is an up-and-coming organization that focuses on outreach to African folks, immigrants from Africa, and those who are originally from Africa. And so this alliance not only is connecting people with this resource and the resources that exist amongst this alliance, but it's taking a step forward to also be a part of the selection committee as well. And I think this is a tremendous grassroots effort by these organizations to ensure that the dollars that are necessary to help these. to ensure that the dollars that are necessary to help these businesses see themselves through COVID are put in their hands. And so we're really proud of this initiative. We're continuing to raise money, and we would love for the city to make a contribution to this fund to help out. I mean, right now, we have over 480 some odd applications that have come in. Now, the ones that have been submitted from the city of Des Moines, only 47. That 47 makes up about $5 million in gross. That's their annual gross collectively. For people of color in Des Moines, there have been 21 applicants. This is as of last Wednesday, and their gross is $1.5 million annually. The losses for Des Moines businesses, the 47, is almost $350,000. And so we're trying to do whatever we can to help these Des Moines businesses considering and mind you, these are just March losses, right? This is half of March. So you can imagine what April is going to look like for so many of these business owners. And so as we're looking to try to help, we're asking the city to just, you know, support these organizations in this effort to ensure that the dollars are connecting with the communities that are most vulnerable in this. And we thank you for your time.
All right. Cameron and Deidre, thank you very, very much for your presentation. Scott, I guess the question, not only to you, but to the rest of the council, is, is there a possibility that we can put these kinds of ideas in the middle of this discussion, the use of some of these funds?
Yes, Mayor, absolutely. And there's a couple of different ways that that can happen. I think we first need to kind of divvy up the money between these three efforts and then work with Deidre and Cameron on the actual details of inviting them into our process or handing off the applications. There's a couple of different ways that could work.
And I think the partnership is working with us. I see Meg Schneider's on, and Josh has a comment. Josh, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask Meg to make a quick comment, if she will at this time.
Yes, please do.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity. This is Meg Schneider, representing Greater Des Moines Partnership. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to partner with the city on the Small Business Relief and Recovery Grant. A quick update from our standpoint, we have been working with other municipalities in the region to get them all to come on board with one fund and one application process that's centralized, along with the vetting process that Scott Sanders outlined prior. Pleased to let you know that, let's see, we have three municipalities committed, another two are in some varying stage of approval with their own councils, and likely some more coming on board. And then as of this morning, we have another $500,000 from the private sector that will go to match those municipal dollars being infused back into our economy here in the Des Moines region. So certainly appreciate that opportunity to partner with you and looking forward to future discussions.
Thanks for the update, Meg. Josh?
Well, I've got a question about what Meg said, actually, in terms of the private sector match. How is that match going to be allocated? Is it dollar-for-dollar or proportionate? So if, for example, the Des Moines City Council is putting in 2/3 of the dollars to the program, are we then eligible for 2/3 of the private sector dollars?
Can you hear me? There we go. Thank you for the question. So as Scott mentioned, the city dollars are dollar-for-dollar back to your own communities. Additionally, there are some dollars from Polk County. Those will be distributed to participating municipalities at a per capita ratio. And then, again, when we have, we have sort of a collection of municipalities that are participating at this point, and the private sector dollars would be spread out in an equal fashion, likely a per capita formula as well.
Okay. So it doesn't matter how much, as long as the city's participating, the formula for allocating those dollars is likely the same. Could you let me know, what amount are the cities that have committed thus far participating at?
Certainly. The city of Urbandale has come in at $100,000. City of Johnston is at 25 with additional funds in reserve. Clive is a verbal as of this point. They have not had a council meeting to formalize that, but they have 25,000 dedicated and perhaps some additional in the wings as well. And Councilman Mandelbaum, I'm just pulling up my notes to make sure I have the ratio allocated properly to give you a better answer.
Okay.
All right. I want to thank everybody. That's a great update. Scott, any other final comments on this CDBG ESG as we move forward to allocation to support citizens, businesses, for all the purposes?
Mr. Mayor?
Josh, go ahead.
So, yeah, I mean, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And, you know, this is a tough situation, because I think there are a tremendous amount of needs all the way around. And the dollars we have to work with are, there's no way that we're going to be able to meet all of the needs. My personal preference is to err on the side of direct relief first. So I would like to see significantly more dollars for the emergency food distribution. And I would also like to see significantly more detail on the Small Business Relief Fund. I had a whole host of questions that I had submitted to the manager, and a lot of the answers were that the details still need to be worked out. I'm comfortable committing dollars there, but I kind of like the Johnston approach, where Johnston put initial dollars in and then has additional dollars that potentially can go into the program. But for me, I'd want to get a better sense of both the need from the emergency food distribution perspective, and if we can do more to help there, as well as the details of the program. I do like the, what Cameron and Deidre were talking about in terms of the minority-owned business. I'm also particularly interested in understanding how we maybe need to target the CDBG dollar to low-income communities or neighborhoods on the small business relief side. And I don't think there were really any details worked out on that particular question. So I'm interested in seeing more detail on that. But my hope is that we can rearrange some of the funding so that minimally, we hit $250,000 for the emergency food distribution, potentially more, because I think there's more need, and adjust dollars accordingly. So that's where I, that's where I sort of start on this process.
Councilmember Mandelbaum, Mayor?
Is this Erin?
This is Erin.
Go ahead.
I do want to make note on the comment that you just raised, Councilmember Mandelbaum, about the low-income areas in particular. The CDBG funding, as we understand it, and not all of the waivers and guidance is out yet, but as applied to small business relief, that portion of the funding will be required to either be in an identified low moderate income area by geography, or employ workers who are, whose households are in a low moderate income bracket spectrum.
Okay. Are we treating those two the same? Because it's significantly different.
It is. We intend to use our application to screen by questions around those two topic areas. So we will ask applicants to identify their block group, which we have, which we can identify with our website. And we intend to ask whether the business believes that they employ workforce who is, whose households are in that low moderate income spectrum. There will be a couple of screening questions.
Yeah. This actually, this conversation also raises another question that I have. And one of the things that I like about the idea of the emergency food distribution is that there are layers of benefit. There's the direct relief with the food distribution. There's an element of small business relief, because you're engaging at least some restaurants, as well as employees of those restaurants. On the small business side, you know, one of the criteria might be the employee low-income workers. Is there anything that's going to require dollars getting back to those workers? I mean, how are we dealing with that piece of it? And how are we dealing with the potential to leverage or layer the benefit on the small business side?
Scott or Erin, any quick comments on that? Then we've got Councilmember Bozen, who also has her hand up and has for a while.
I would just say that I know that the application will ask for how the funds will get spent. And we anticipate that a lot of the answers will be in payroll as one of the options. So we will have it as part of the conversation with the applicants on how those funds will get spent.
I mean, if, as a quick follow-up, I mean, can that be, can the payroll piece be a criteria for the program?
Hmm. I think I'd have to defer if that's part of the conversation that Meg has had with any of the center.
Can we just make that 750 and put the other $250,000 in the emergency food distribution and move on? I mean, we're not going to ever fill everyone's needs, but I'm with Josh. People need to eat. And if we could put a little bit more money into that right now, that's an immediate help to those folks. Or we already committed a million dollars to try to get the other matches, Scott?
I would not resist that, Joe, at all.
So why don't we just do that? Josh, and Connie, I'm sorry I didn't raise my hand.
That's okay. You were saying what I was going to say, so.
I mean, can we just flip that around a little bit? Josh, are you okay with that? That we have three, we'll have $350,000 for the emergency food distribution? And then we definitely are going to need some more details for the Small Business Relief Fund. Josh raised some great questions, and I think that we want to make sure that it is going to help not the employers, but the employees. I mean, and I know it's going to help the employer by able to pay some rent, so they can actually have a job for those employees to come back when they're able to get back open. I think that's part of it. But right now, we can, we can fill an immediate need by putting more money into that emergency food distribution and give it to some restaurants that are already open and are able to put some people back to work. And that would be helpful with helping people eat and putting money in other people's pockets that can work. Does that make sense?
I think it makes sense. One of the other questions, I think, Scott, is where are you going to take it out of? Are you going to take it out of the rental assistance? I mean, keeping a roof over people's heads is pretty important as well.
No.
No. Take it out of the million dollars.
So let's, you know, make sure we understand what we're doing, how we're doing it. I appreciate the effort, and certainly putting food on the table is really a huge priority for an awful lot of people. Councilmember Bozen?
I was just going to say that I would agree with taking some out of the small business and going into the food, because you are helping a small business, in most cases, restaurants. So I think we're just transferring dollars from a small business account into something that I think is critical, because we're talking about hot food probably from a restaurant, instead of the packaged food that the school's doing a tremendous job, but I don't know how much is hot. So I think that I would be for that. And I do think we need some guidelines. And I think from what Erin talked about, I think it's a good, you know, it sounds really good, because there is never going to be enough dollars. And we've got to narrow it into the people we can help the most. And that would possibly be the people who are paying rent for the buildings they, I don't know if that's a question. But who's paying rent is more impacted, I suppose, than if you owned your own building or whatever. But I do think more needs to go to food, because you're helping small business. So that's, just wanted to add that.
Mayor, if I could, again, this is Scott. So I understand the proposal would be to lower the small business to 750 and put the 250 down into the emergency food to make that 350. I think, a couple of things. That does not impact the private match, because the private match is on the other source, the half a million we're bringing in of ED funds. So that's a good, good thing, that lowering the CDBG would not impact the private match. And in my understanding, it also does not impact the counties participating.
Perfect. That's great.
That would work. And now here, I would, I would say this, though. Because we're taking it out of the small business, I would want Deidre and Cameron to maybe identify some minority-owned restaurants that could participate in the emergency food program.
There you go. That's great.
That way, we can have a win-win situation that we impact. If they're still on the phone, maybe they could answer, because they already have applications for some of the funds.
Yeah. I don't want to speak for them, but I think in a rather extended conversation, I think that may work. Deidre, you're on? Cameron?
I am. I am still on.
And Cameron, I see your hands up as well. Do you guys agree with this concept?
You're both open.
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
And we could definitely identify some black-owned and minority-owned restaurants for you as well.
That'd be great.
Well, and the, and we can, just through the, through the alliance, the alliance can make recommendations for small business owners who are not black, but also are people of color.
Okay. All right. Josh, you want to make a quick comment?
Well, I was going to say, I mean, as we continue to work through the small business side of this, I really want to emphasize the importance of the multiple benefits and trying to identify multiple benefits for those dollars. I think getting those dollars to small businesses that are owned by people of color is one of the ways that we can hit the multiple benefits. The other piece, again, I want to emphasize, is getting dollars and knowing that the dollars are going to go to employees, or that folks are going to be taken care of in that way. That's, that's multiple layers, the payroll piece. So that, to me, is a really important detail in terms of that, that part of the program.
Any final closing thoughts, Cameron or Deidre?
I will move the item, Your Honor.
All right. This has been a really good discussion.
I was, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, for many of our small businesses that are in low-income areas, and, you know, just are coming from disadvantaged communities, are now having challenges dealing with this, it's going to be a lot more difficult getting them the dollars as it relates to the food component in a massive way. There will be some impact, for sure, that we can make it from that vantage point. But many of our businesses, as we're seeing, are not even equipped to open their doors, because they don't have the cash flow that's coming in, even to get them the food. Like, they, they would need money fronted to them. That's the disposition that, that many of them are in, because they're just trying to keep the lights on. um, on and, and, and keep the rent paid and, and things along those lines.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion in place.
Mayor?
Yep.
Just sorry I didn't get to raise my hand, Scott. So, um, we didn't get a chance to talk if I could just briefly and let Chris Johansson chime in on the ESG side of this. Um, unless we want to get consensus out of the council, uh, vigilantly. Uh, the, the ESG is funding for, uh, homeless prevention. And there are two aspects that we anticipate spending that funding on, uh, one of which is the computer software and the information system, uh, that, that we need to, uh, for tracking. And then also, uh, I spoke into all of you about, uh, some of the shelter needs. And I know Melissa has, has, has reached out to, uh, to, to many of you as well. Um, there are additional costs at the CIS shelter, uh, involving having some of the residents dispersed at hotels to, in order that we don't potentially infect the entire shelter, uh, if there were an outbreak. Uh, and so their numbers are slightly lower than normal. I think around the 80, 85 is last I had heard instead of their capacity in the 130, 150 range. And they have a couple of hotels that have offered to take in those residents, again, spreading, spreading them out into separate facilities. There is a cost to that. The county is also chipping in to help pay for that. And so, uh, some of these funds that you see at the last line item would be spent on, uh, some of those costs in, in housing those individuals. Um, uh, at this point in time, I think we have about 50 to 60,000 dollars of bills to be paid, uh, for that cost. I would anticipate that amount, uh, doubling on the temporary use of those hotels. Um, and, and so you, we could easily see 120 to maybe 150,000 of that line item being spent for that purpose. And then the rest being able to be available for other prevention, uh, opportunities. Chris, did I miss anything there? Do you want to add? And then we can ask the council for consensus.
Chris? Chris, are you there?
Just a moment, I have to unmute him. Chris?
Yep, I'm here. The, uh, one thing I would like to add, uh, with all of our ESG funding, annually, we go through a review process with the Polk County Continuum of Care. So that's one piece we're still waiting on. Tomorrow, they're having a board meeting to make a recommendation on the, uh, the remaining 964,000 on how to split that between those three categories. So once we have that recommendation, uh, Andrew may be making a recommendation to council on how those funding will be used.
Thank you, Chris. And so to remind the council, we have a May 4 hearing to also get public input. And we can, uh, change, uh, the documents for May 4th to reflect this conversation that we're having now. So Mayor, there's not a, uh, I, I am looking for consensus so we can take our next steps. So somewhat of a, uh, a vote, so to speak, but just looking for consensus that what we've just talked about for allocations is acceptable to council and we, we can move those forward. Thank you.
So, uh, Scott, would you suggest we, uh, get a motion to receive and file and see if anybody, uh, uh, does everybody agree, I guess, to essentially the direction we're headed?
Yes, and I would like each council member to indicate if they're agreeable, if that's possible. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bozen, do you want to start?
I'll start, I'm agreeable. I think it's an important area that we need to make sure that we help cover the expenses that they have incurred. And the county hasn't heard too already.
Okay, good. Kay, you want to pull the balance?
Yes. Voss?
Carl?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Couldn't quite hear Kay. Um, yes, I'm, uh, in agreement with, with the, uh, mix outlined here.
Good. Next.
Gray?
Yes, I am in agreement as well.
Westergaard?
Absolutely. My hope is, is that we can have people go to bed at night with full tummies and have a roof over their head.
Mandelbaum?
Yes, I, I'm, uh, in agreement with the direction this is heading. Uh, the, the piece I want to emphasize is, I, I hope between now and May 4th that we can get, uh, some additional details, particularly on the, the small business side. Uh, and I, I would say, I, I still, uh, I, I like the idea of maybe committing that general amount, but having some in the initial commitment and then the remainder contingent on what we see in terms of details and some of the, and demonstrated need.
Gatto?
Just a clarification, is, so we're having a hearing on this on May 4th? Is that what we're doing right now? We're setting the date of hearing for this or what, what, are we voting on this right now?
So, so the hearing was actually set at the last council meeting.
Well, that's what I thought.
Yeah. For May 4th.
Are we having a second and a third reading on?
The idea here is to try to get consensus.
If we agree.
Joe, we're trying to get consensus as to whether we're moving in the right direction. And then, uh, as already outlined, uh, on the 4th, I believe it's going to be the agenda. Is that a proper interpretation, Scott?
Yes, Mayor, Chris, uh, Johansson, any? We won't have the final documents for everything on May 4th, but the plan will allow the CDBG and ESG funds, uh, to move forward in, in that respect.
When will you be distributing this money? Is it after May 4th or is it before May 4th?
Uh, after, much, much after May 4th. Cause there, there's a lot of detail to still work out.
Okay, do we have a timeline of how much after this is going to be?
Well, so one of the details on the small business, uh, grant is that we would need a two week window, uh, potentially for the applications. Um, and then obviously reviewing those, uh, applications. So I would, I would see the small business grants being available in June.
Well, I mean, I think, Mrs. DeJure pointed out that, that, I mean, they're going to need money to get reopened and get, get going. And if the governor opens up even at 50% in two weeks, we're not being much of a help to, to anyone at that point for a small business. So I'm just wondering why we're, we're not voting on it now? And I mean, if we can come to a consensus, why aren't we voting on it now? And then you can start taking the application in two weeks. People can start having some money and we can start feeding people instead of waiting to feed them in June. I mean, if you want to make an impact on people's lives, let's make an impact on their lives.
So the emergency, uh, food can move quicker.
When?
I think that's more a question of how quickly the logistics can come together. Uh, Michelle spoke to that a little bit.
But is that June also, Scott? Or can we come to a consensus? Vote on this tonight and get, get it moving? We can get the more details for the small business. As Josh pointed out, there is many questions and I agree with him that we need some questions answered. But as far as feeding people, I'd like to see an, an immediate impact to, to help people eat.
Yeah, so.
Do we have the funds?
We don't, we, the funds would be reimbursed, reimbursable. And so we're going to have the cash flow, uh, the, the programs and be reimbursed with the CDBG funds.
Okay.
The May 4th, I mean, getting, I, I guess I would have to, to, to have those conversations with Michelle and others on the, uh, food.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, I, it, I'm, I'm in consensus to what we've talked about for the last hour about it. I mean, I think there's some great questions raised. But I mean, if we're going to talk about it for another hour on May 4th, then I'll make the motion to move it with some of the changes that we made. Can we just vote then or, and then we can talk about it on May 4th again?
Well, let me just say that with the consensus of the council, we're going to move as quickly as we can.
Okay.
And so that's why I was asking for every, every council member to, to speak to it. Um, but I think, I think we'll have enough direction from council to move it quickly at that point.
I would be in agreement if you take 250,000 dollars and put it in the emergency fund of the food relief.
Okay, that's what we needed to know.
Okay. That's, that's what I'm in agreement with. There, that's my consensus.
And expedite it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, let, let's get it moving.
Kay, Kay, where are we on the, uh, the poll?
I just need to go to you, Your Honor.
Yes.
Okay. Then we have seven in consensus to move forward.
All right. Thank you all for the input. This is important work and, uh, Scott, I think you got the message that we want to move it, uh, uh, as expeditiously as possible. And I want to thank, uh, Deidra and Cameron for their input on this as well. And please, uh, stay engaged in this. Uh, uh, we're going to need all the support we can get from, uh, the whole community.
There's a hand up for Deidra. It's Deidra.
Deidra, go ahead.
This moment. Deidra, I'm going to hit you and unmute you, don't hit at the same time. Okay, there you go.
She muted herself.
Well, we're hitting at the same time. There.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can, thank you.
Awesome, I just wanted to thank you all for the time. One of the things that we didn't go through our entire program, but we can potentially go through it on, on May 4th if necessary. But our program is up and running. Like I said, we've already received over 400 applications. The committee scored applications over the weekend. Um, and our fiscal agent, uh, Iowa, um, uh, Community Capital is, um, a CDFI. And so we can receive those funds at any point in time to start dispersing to communities throughout the city of Des Moines.
Thank you.
Carl, one final point?
Yes, uh, could we reach consensus that Joe Gatto did some really great work today?
No, it wasn't Joe Gatto.
Well, Joe Gatto, Bradas and all the other partners in this, that was, uh, stirring, so.
Yep, great job, Joe.
Thanks for being part of this.
It was, it was humbling, let me tell you.
Shows the need.
Yeah, it does.
Well, I don't think we need to take a vote on it. I think you got seven atta boys, uh, there, Joe, so.
Thank you, Carl.
I'll let your partners at Elder and, you know, others, uh, know, so.
I will, I will, thank you.
All right, well, thank you all, uh, very much. And, uh, let's give everybody an atta boy. I appreciate the, uh, all of our staff. Uh, certainly our frontline workers that are helping, uh, our citizens every single day and, uh, from, uh, police and fire to public works to parks and, and all the people that are on the, uh, the phone and participated in all of our work. So thank you to each and every one of you. And, uh, if somebody can give us a motion, why don't we have it to, uh, adjourn this meeting?
I'll move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Thank you all.
Good night.
Let's talk soon. Thank you, bye-bye.
Be safe, I can't wait to see everyone. I can't take these Zoom meetings much more.